Mr. Montepatla will be back shortly. So the next item, item three, conditional use permit amendment and architectural site approval to consider a modification of the original Main Street use permit U two thousand eight oh one for the addition of a second floor within shop one currently occupied by TD Ameritrade, application number M twenty twenty-two oh three, ASA twenty twenty-three oh nine. Applicant, Main Street Cupertino Retail Property LLC, location nineteen four oh nine Stevens Creek Boulevard, accessor parcel number three one six two zero one one two. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Planning Commission. This is, as you mentioned, a use permit and an ASA modification for the Main Street project. And we have here Senior Planner John Martier present, making that presentation.
Good evening, or is it good night? Almost good morning. So John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. I'm the project manager of this use permit modification for the Main Street development. So I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. So a quick background on Main Street. So the third, the second modification to the original use permit was done in two thousand twelve for the Main Street Cupertino. What was approved was allocation of square footage of one hundred and thirty thousand five hundred square feet for the retail commercial component, as well as one hundred and eighty rooms for the onsite hotel, two hundred and sixty thousand square feet of office, which is occupied by, by Apple currently, and one hundred and twenty unit apartment building, as well as a parking garage that has, I believe, five floors above ground and two below. The request by the applicant, Mike Rody, of San Hill and Main Street Aggregator LLC, who's the owner of the, of the Main Street development, is, is within shop one. Each building does have its own name. Shop one is on the eastern side of the Main Street project, of Main Street Cooper Tino Development, adjacent to Lazy Dog to the east, as well as surrounded by the office uses to the north and east of that site as well. So shop one's been occupied by TD Ameritrade. It's a single-story building that's slightly over fifty-five hundred square feet since, since it was given a certificate of occupancy. As I said, the existing square footage is actually closer to around fifty-nine hundred square feet. The request is to add fifty-five hundred square feet to a second floor addition, bringing the total of this site, of this building of shop one to eleven thousand five hundred fifteen square feet, which would include minor facade modifications. The reason for this is that TD Ameritrade is, or either has or will be shutting down its operations at the marketplace, which is just down the street. And so they're going to be consolidating their use on this, on this site. Just to go over some of the elevation modifications. So as you can see, you have the exterior east elevation, which is facing the Apple office buildings onsite, as well as the exterior west elevation, which is facing Lazy Dog. And so here's the proposed, you can compare the proposed with the existing. So the, the main changes are the windows, which will be located on those elevations right there. And, you know, they're discolored because they're supposed to be opaque for the, for that second floor. As you can see, the shell of the building will not, will not rise at all, so that the height of the tower, the parapets, whatnot. But rather, within that parapet area, the ceiling will be, will, will be raised up about eight feet. And going through the north and south elevations, the south elevations was face Stevens Creek Boulevard, and the north elevation faces Cafe Max. Again, the may, big changes are just windows along the facade. Quick analysis of the project. The project conforms to the general plan and zoning, as, you know, no further higher setback will be added to shop one, as well as incursion into the one-to-one slope line from Stevens Creek Boulevard. In terms of the allocation, so from the Hardest City retail allocation, fifty, slightly over fifty-five hundred square feet will be allocated out of that and allocated to the project site, which would bring the project allocation total of one hundred and thirty-six thousand and eighty-five square feet of retail commercial. In terms of, we, we did have our traffic consultant do a parking analysis for the site, and they found that twelve hundred and forty-two, oh, the twelve hundred and forty-two shared parking spaces throughout the development at a peak hours, nine hundred and nine parking spaces would be, are anticipated to be used during those peak hour times, leaving a buffer of over three hundred spaces. Again, those parking spaces do not count the hundreds that are allocated specifically to Apple, as well as the hundreds that are allocated to the residential development Also, our, our secret consultant, David J. Powers, who's actually virtually with us right now, completed a third addendum to the final environmental impact report, just to ensure that with this fifty-five hundred square foot addition, there won't be any impacts that weren't analyzed in the EIR. So staff's recommendation is to, is that the Planning Commission adopt the proposed draft resolutions to adopt a third addendum to the EIR and approve the conditional use permit, M twenty twenty-two zero zero three, and approve the architectural site approval permit, ASA twenty twenty-three zero zero nine. Next step is should the project be approved? The Planning Commission's decision on this project is final unless an appeal is filed within fourteen calendar days of the day of the decision. All approvals granted by the Planning Commission shall go into effect after fourteen days. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, very good. Does the applicant have a presentation? Mike? Okay. Do we have any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
What about on Zoom?
One hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, let me go there.
Two hands.
Two hands, okay. All right. Welcome, Jennifer Griffin. You have three minutes.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission. It's, I will state that it is nice to have a planning commission meeting after so many have been canceled. I'm very concerned about this after having attended city council meetings and planning commissions since two thousand and two in this city. We are setting a precedent here. So tonight, we are conducting the city's business and the public's by having a planning commission meeting. I was present during all of the building and decisions about Main Street back, what is this, fifteen years now, more? Yes, I, the Ameritrade building, I've been happy that that was one story. It's a very pretty building. It's very nice to look at it. I can understand that they will not be adding much height to the building by putting a second story in, but what I'm concerned about is, are we setting a precedent here? Are we going to be asking to put in additional height on the other buildings? We have the former small Target building. We have other buildings that are only one story. We have a brand-new state law that I think came in in July of two thousand twenty-three. I think it's A B two one one one, or something like that, that allows commercial to be changed into housing. Is this where we're going with this? Okay, this, this whole complex, Main Street is up against Stevens Creek Boulevard. We're going to have massive changes coming in because of the potential for the housing element. There are going to be massive pressures due to the housing element, et cetera, and it does not, it, it may mean that Main Street may have to go for more housing along Stevens Creek Boulevard. We don't know what the Ameritrade building will wind up as. You can now convert commercial into housing. We could wind up with a two-story housing complex where Ameritrade is. If that's all we were doing is just putting eight feet on the Ameritrade building, no problem, but there are so many new things that have come out of the state level, the housing element, the, what, two hundred and fifty housing laws that have rolled out. We don't know what is going to happen there or anywhere in the city. And this is the part that, is there a certain amount of commercial space that Main Street is allowed to occupy, et cetera, et cetera? If you all could refresh me. If you choose to do this, okay, so be it, but there needs to be a specification that they can't do this again for five years. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, next we have San R., welcome.
Okay, let me be the first to thank Planning Commission Chair Shar for voting firmly with the residents on the prior item. I think probably thousands of our residents were following this closely and took note of it. Now, I wanna, I wanna comment on what the impact to public use of Main Street is gonna be if you started a construction project at this location. This is a location that I do frequent as a customer of TD Ameritrade pretty often. It is an entrance that is heavily used and close to some of the restaurants that are also heavily used. So what is the impact to businesses, particularly the restaurants located right across from the TD Ameritrade building, as this construction probably is gonna run for, I would imagine, at least a year to two years? And then what is the precedent it sets? And are we gonna see a series of rolling constructions that start adding a second story to each of these, each of these buildings that are on Main Street? I mean, Main Street certainly could use more, more retail and more restaurants and more boba shops and coffee shops, but the question is, at what cost to existing use and how it impacts public use? Main Street is the closest we have to a downtown in Cupertino. We have nothing else. And with all other retail going away, that's, that's really the only place for the public to get some, some leisure entertainment and, and some, and some dining out. So appreciate your considering public use impact while voting on this. And once again, thank you Chair Shar for speaking with your words, unlike many other commissioners who spoke, but the votes didn't reflect their support for us since. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That is the end of the public comment on this item. So we can go to, there's no applicant presentation. We can bring it back to the commissioners to talk about. I, I've got, only got really one question. It's, what is the parking situation? Are they way above what is required for the parking, or?
Following the analysis, you know, they, they have a significant buffer between what they have onsite and what the, what the actual demand is.
No, I wasn't asking what the demand is, what, in terms of what the city requires.
Well, I mean, the, they have what's called a shared parking analysis, so it's, it's not like we, the parking's based upon, you know, per seats and whatnot. It's based upon just, you know, the, the, all the uses are shared, common parking. So it was, it was all, when it was analyzed originally in the EIR and subsequently by our traffic consultants, you know, they, it was analyzed at a rate of, of how each use.
Yeah.
Uses, uses the parking communally, rather than just like, okay, for every four hundred square feet, you were required to have two spaces. That's not how it's measured on the site.
Okay, very good. And how many more employees will be working in the building now?
I don't, I don't recall through the, through the EIR. If David J. Powers on, on call, do you recall whether the employee count was analyzed? Kristi?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Weiss. I'm with David Powers and Associates, and we assisted the city in preparing the environmental review for this project. So Chair Shar, to answer your question, we did not calculate how many employees would be generated from the additional five thousand five hundred square feet of additional space.
Okay, but it's an additional, how many square feet? An additional?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, so.
Thirty, forty people.
Right, you have to divide by about a hundred, a hundred and fifty, okay. And you mentioned that there's another TD Ameritrade office at Marketplace now?
I believe that's where it is, right, Mike? Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. Yeah, so Ameritrade, TD Ameritrade is gonna cease to exist because Schwab has purchased TD. So that's the, that's the challenge, right? So they're trying to collapse into one building, and they like the Main Street property very much, so the idea is for them to.
So the Schwab office is moving.
Yeah, so Schwab will come to TD Ameritrade, which they've kind of already done. They're gonna do some sign changes here in the near term, and so it'll be Schwab, not TD. TD Ameritrade will cease to exist.
Yeah, I already saw my account was transferred to Schwab, so I wondered why. What was going?
Yeah, whether you wanted to or not.
Yeah.
So, that's it.
Okay, very good. I don't have anything else.
No, no questions.
No, I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
So wasn't this part of the original plan? I'm just trying to see, you know, what changed now, and all of a sudden, they're adding another five thousand square feet to this building?
This building was always planned to be, since the, the last modification, to be a single-story building, so this is, this is a new scope for this building specifically, if that's your question.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to see, you know, when the Main Street was built, right? This was all part of the development, right? So why wasn't this, at that time, conceived as, you know, two-story building with ten thousand square feet and stuff, you know, building it as a five thousand and then now adding five thousand more?
I'm assuming there wasn't a need for at the time. I mean, needs do change. I mean, Mike, you, I don't know if you know any, any more detail into that as well?
Yeah, so when we contemplated this development, there was not a, there was not a forecast for a two-level financial retail concept such as TD Ameritrade. In fact, this building is, is already also has a grease interceptor with it, so it could be anything. So we, we like the idea of financial retail here.
No, I'm just trying to understand, you know, are we going to see piecemeal, you know, adds to various buildings in Main Street, which is, if this was conceived as, you know, original project of, you know, certain amount of square footage for office and various uses, then the requirements in the approval process, you know, would be, might be different than, you know, now, you know, tagging on a little bit here and there?
Yeah, I, I think your question's a good one. You know, I think that Main Street's been well thought out. It's been super successful. We're not really trying to change much of it. We have a, we have a client that is very interested in remaining in our project and, quite honestly, remaining in Cupertino. And this will keep them in Cupertino as opposed to vacating.
So are they going to use both floors of that building?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
What does this mean to, you know, office allocation entitlement to various other properties in the city? If you're taking away from, you know, the reserve and, you know, giving it to Main Street?
Well, this is, this is considered a commercial office, so it falls under a retail allocation in general plan, and as we, if I can show the allocation.
Seven hundred ninety thousand minus, you know, five thousand.
It's, 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 yeah, it's not gonna affect it that much. I mean, we've been slow to allocate those retail square footages in the last ten years or so.
Does this impact, you know, the housing shortage situation negatively?
In terms of jobs housing, but I, 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 I wouldn't guess that at this time, yeah.
Maybe, maybe related to that, the policy of the Planning Department is that if there is allocation available of any type, that, that an applicant has the right to ask for that, right?
Yeah, correct. You know, when we, when we, when we look at these, when we analyze these, these projects, we look at multiple things, zoning and general plan, and so, you know, the allocation pot is part of general plan conformant, so if there's, if there's suitable, is, if there's a suitable site and enough allocation, square footage in the pot, then, you know, the, we would tend to support it.
Yeah, I, I think in this, in this particular case, you know, there, when the general plan was approved, there, there was, you know, that implied a certain ratio so that, you know, if somebody uses that allocation, then, you know, it shouldn't upset that, you know, upset that earlier calculation. Now, of course, the issue is if, you know, people choose not to use, you know, the housing allocation.
Right, so why was that building built so tall to begin with? It was only one story.
I think that's a really good question. You know, I can't give you a great answer for that, but I think it was built to kind of match the buildings across the street and look, not make it look so small. I think it matches the look across the Main Street. And even, even Lazy Dog is one level. It's got high-volume ceilings, same thing with Eureka, and same thing with Alexander's, so.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Mooney, why don't you make the motion this time?
Sorry, before we go into that, so one quick comment. Per our city municipal code, when you add, I think, what was it, fifty-five, eighty, or something, square feet, you need to add five bike spaces, bike parking spaces, so I'd like to add that as an amendment to the motion.
Sure, we're happy to do that. We, of course, have a, have a bike cage, and quite honestly, it's not used very much, but we can add somewhere a bike rack somewhere throughout the property.
Is it a public bike cage?
It is.
Where is it located?
It's in the garage, right next to Apple, on the Apple side.
So.
Kind of behind Piece of My Heart, if you will, on the first level.
Wow, I had no idea that.
I had no idea.
Well, I can tell you from personal knowledge, I've never seen more than six bikes in there at any given time.
I think part of the issue is the location. It needs to be convenient and close to the entrance, so as part of.
It's right at the entrance of the garage.
Of the business.
Yeah.
So do you want to make the motion and then make the amendment, or how do we do this?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion. This is just a recommendation again, right?
Right.
No, no, this is, okay.
No, no, this one.
Because it has no resolution number, okay. Okay, this is a resolution of the Planning Commission, the City of Cupertino, recommending approval of amendments to Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter nineteen point seven six, Table nineteen point seven six oh three oh, to allow, oh, God, I'm reading the wrong one. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was wondering.
I've got so mu, so many things open here on, on my desktop here, okay. Okay, this is a resolution of the Planning Commission, the City of Cupertino, approving adoption of a third addendum to a previously adopted environmental impact report, approving a modification of an existing use permit, U two thousand eight oh one, to allow modification of the original Main Street use permit, U two thousand eight oh one, for the addition of a second floor within shop one, TD Ameritrade.
Okay, and I would like to propose an amendment.
I think he needs a second first before he can amend that. So I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
You second it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I'd like to propose an amendment to add an additional requirement that five bike parking spaces be added per the city municipal code requirement, within fifty feet of the building's entrance, conveniently visible to building visitors.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that. Okay, no more discussion?
No, I think Chair, you, you would accept that.
Yeah, I accept.
Amendment.
I accept the amendment.
The second needs to also accept.
Oh, a second, okay.
That second, who made?
Are you seconding the?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so I think there's a second one here too, right?
There was.
No, this is a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cupertino approving an architectural and site approval permit to add a second floor to shop one, TD Ameritrade of the Main Street Cupertino Development.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, wonderful. Now we are on to the ADU and second story. Can we have the staff report? And can I ask why these were, two were combined like this?
It's, it's a municipal code amendment, so it was best to do it together rather than piecemeal, but that was our thought as staff.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, me again. John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development, and I'm here presenting the proposed amendments to municipal code, chapter, chapters nineteen twelve, nineteen twenty-eight, and nineteen one twelve regarding two-story permits and accessory dwelling unit laws. Little bit of background, two-story permit, so when is a two-story permit required in the City of Cupertino? Is required when a two-story addition or new two-story home is proposed in an R1 zoning district. Going back two years to November twenty twenty-one, the city has received seven hundred and sixty-eight planning permit applications. Of those seven sixty-eight, ninety-eight of those are two-story permit applications. Of all the codified planning entitlements, this is the, the permit that we, that staff has received the most of in the last couple of years, and typically, pretty much every year. Occasionally, staff goes through the zoning ordinance and looks for ways to streamline processes, pretty much make things, makes, to make the code more consistent with the general plan, more consistent internally and whatnot. And so this is one way to reevaluate our permitting process, particularly with the two-story permit. With the two-story permit going before you and that being eliminated from the zoning ordinance, the standards aren't going away. So any two-story addition, any new two-story home would still remain subject to the approval of a building permit, and any standards that are still there within the zoning ordinance as well. And so planning staff will still be charged with reviewing any building permit for compliance with the codified development standards. What's not going away are minor residential permits, as well as residential design review permits, and those are proposed to be remained. So what are residential, what do residential, minor residential permits cover? Balconies on, on second stories that have views into the neighboring side or rear yards, as well as non-conforming wall lines, extensions, certain additions in hillside areas that happen to be also R1. Residential design review encompasses new two-story homes, let's say, in an R1A zone, as well as certain two-story additions or homes that have a side yard setback for the second floor of less than fif, between ten to fifteen feet on either side, as well as new two-story or, or additions to existing two-story homes where the first to second floor ratio is above sixty-six percent. So basically, essentially discouraging any type of, you know, blocky-looking homes and whatnot. So now, so the two-story permit, we would be amending the municipal codes nineteen twelve, nineteen two eight, which are single-family residential zones. Again, remove all references to this two-story permit, maintain the prescriptive zoning standards, which include setbacks, FAR, privacy screenings, and whatnot. Certain discretionary design standards proposed to be non-discretionary. So in our, in nineteen two eight, we have a, it's pretty discretionary design standards that have a should rather than a shall. Should have living area close to the street then, than the garage and whatnot. Although staff has been applying those as a, as a, as a non-discretionary design standard. In the code, it's, 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 it's enforced as, as, or written as, as more discretionary than, than we have been applying it. So part of this zoning ordinance amendment is to make those discretionary design standards non-discretionary. So I'm gonna go through a few of those bulleted items right now. Eliminating three-car, three-car wide curb cuts. No more than fifty percent of the front elevation of a house shall consist of garage area. Uh no more than fifty percent of the front elevation of a house shall consist of garage area, essentially having more living area visible from the street rather than garage. Unless, of course, there are circumstances when the lot is not wide enough to accommodate that standard. Uh usable living area, as we discussed earlier, uh shall be close to the street while garages should be set back more. Structure shall not have mechanical heating or cooling equipment or associated piping installed on the roof. And portions shall appear uh proportionately greater in the width than in height. Again, these were shoulds rather than shalls currently. Accessory dwelling units, excuse me. Uh chapter nineteen twelve is our ADU ordinance and has been modified several times since twenty sixteen when the state started mandating um. More um more teeth behind, you know, allowing for these secondary units on um single-family zoning districts as well as multifamily zoning districts. Um and so since that time, the city has been keeping up with the state mandated um laws to. By by updating the ordinance um when when new laws will come come about. Uh based on the recent changes to state law, the state's current ADU ordinance is outdated and in many cases unenforceable. So um the major changes um to nineteen twelve are as follows, um. For streamlined ADUs, again streamlined ADUs are typically any ADU pro- proposed um in a multifamily zone as well as um. Detached or attached ADUs that are under eight hundred square feet um. Or internal conversions of any size or J- JADUs within a single-family zone. Um so what the state allows is three ADUs per single-family home. Um in any one of the combination of of those four, so one attached ADU under eight hundred square feet. One conversion of ADU space, um either within a principal dwelling unit or accessory structure. Um one detached ADU under eight hundred square feet or one JADU. Um the next thing amongst streamlined ADUs is allowance for heights of eighteen feet for detached ADU if the ADU is within half a mile. Walking distance of a major transit stopper corridor such as Stevens Creek Boulevard. And uh twenty-five feet if it's attached to the principal dwelling unit. Um further allowing for a second story um. To a detached ADUs if it's located, if that ADU is located within a half mile of a a walking distance of a major transit stopper corridor. Non-streaming, uh non-streamlined ADUs are essentially whatever is not streamlined. So in this case, um AD detached or attached ADUs that are um over eight hundred square feet. Um so in this case, uh even though they're non-streamlined, um the state does allow those to be um added height. Uh if it's detached, eighteen feet. If it's attached, twenty-five feet. Again, uh depending upon how far they are from uh transit. And um allowance for second stories as well, similar to the streamlined ADUs. Um certain Senate bills, I although although I failed to mention this in the staff report, I want to go over the three um state bills that um. That come effective January first, twenty twenty four. Uh the first one, AB one one zero three three, um which is optional for cities to. To to place as um in their in their ordinances, um. Details how ADUs can be sold separately as condominiums. Um so this is something that we, staff is not recommending, recommending at this time, just because. We're not very familiar with the the state law right now. We have a study that as well as we should. Uh in order to to formulate a recommendation for planning commission, city council to approve or not. So this is something we could always come back at a later date to to recommend. Um but again.
I'm sorry, does that bill say detached ADU sold separately or or?
Uh even attached, any ADU, I believe. Yeah. And again, this is optional. So cities do, this is not mandated for every jurisdiction to do so. Um I know in the some of the descriptions of it, this is currently done in some of the uh northwestern parts of the United States, such as, I think, Oregon, Washington have the similar laws. Where you can um s- uh sell off your ADUs as a condominium. Um AB nine seven six is not optional, but it's uh requi- it it extends the um owner occupancy prohibitions beyond twenty twenty five. This is something we already have our ordinance and have had our ordinance for quite a bit, even before twenty sixteen. This is to say that um. Many jurisdictions had would have these these standards where to have an ADU, you had to have the owner live on site. We haven't had the standard for quite a bit of time. We currently don't have it. So this this um assembly bill did not affect us currently. Um and then the last one is AB one three three two, streamline thirty-day approvals for pre-approved ADU plans. Uh we have a pre-approved ADU process already. That came in effect about two years ago, I believe. Um so currently we have two um. Uh two um uh ADU developers that are on our webpage that offer pre-approved ADU plans as well. Um few errata slides, um just going back through the um ordinance and seeing, um so one clarification, so for the two-story permit modification. Um adding the word equipment into that standard under nineteen two eight one ten A five, um right now it just says cooling, it doesn't. Just to be more specific on the equipment itself. Um under accessory dwelling units, um adding the greater than. Eight hundred. Doesn't work. It's not working, sorry. I used to be able to circle. Nice little circles with my finger. Um adding the greater than eight hundred square feet to attached um. ADUs, um this this table is in reference to the non-streamlined. Then um some language that was unfortunately placed here um in air, uh this language over here on table nineteen one twelve oh four oh D. Under uh the non-streamlined detached ADUs, um it was referencing uh multifamily, uh multi-story developments when it should. And that when this is a table specifically for single uh family. And um and same thing with with this errata right here, uh under attached, under the non-streamlined. So the recommended actions that the planning commission adopted draft resolution, uh recommended the city council adopt an ordinance to, one, um find that the proposed actions are exempt. From the California Environmental Quality Act and sequel guidelines and to amend the following, uh chapter twelve administration. Chapter nineteen two eight, single-family residential R one zones and chapter nineteen one twelve, accessory dwelling units.
Can you go back to the previous?
Sure. Yeah. So most likely what happens is that we would combine these two rows under, so it'd be one one single row under each, just to consolidate.
Okay, but the detached is still discretion.
Yes, yes, these are non-streamlined, yeah. Sure. And then the next steps, planning commission recommendation will be forwarded to city council on December fifth. Uh for first reading and the tentatively scheduled second reading is December nineteenth. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, well, let's go to public comment. I shouldn't have actually asked that question.
We have one speaker card in community hall and one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, uh welcome Jean Bedord.
Good evening. It's been a while. Anyway, my name is Jean Bedord and I am a resident of Cupertino. And I support these changes to the municipal code um to encourage the production of ADUs. Um my experience has been that most of these ADUs are for seniors, senior members of the family or dependent children. And that we should minimize the processes needed in order to add additional housing um in on our existing land. Um and I really encourage making it much more flexible for homeowners to go through the permitting process. Um and actually get the housing built. Um so in general, please, please simplify. And move ahead so we can have more housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Now we are moving to uh remote participants. Welcome, Jennifer Griffin.
Uh thank you, planning commission. Um. I am a little bit concerned. I understand staff is trying to do their best, but putting two-story housing, lumping them in with. The ADU problem is really difficult to deal with. Um there are hours on the history book of. What happened with the two-story housing in Cupertino. Right now, we're beginning to produce giant ADU buildings on every corner in the city. They're basically homes that have got ADUs stuck all over them. The city's tried to pretty them up, but they're they're becoming giant. Uh they look like huge hotels stuck on five thousand square foot lots with ADUs stuck all over them. They look like something out of a submarine commercial or something. Um I, we right now have an extremely irresponsible governor. Any governor that would sign a bill. That would allow ADUs to be sold separately on residential properties. Is not fit to be president. The these these homes have to be put in as they have to form an HOA. Could, how the heck do you set up splitting a lot? Who owns the lot? Is, what are the protections for the neighbors? What if the, what if someone, like. It's you're gonna have four different owners. You're basically making a condo complex. What if they don't pay their HOA fees? Okay. It, and the governor again signed it and he he's just throwing it out there for the rest of the state to spend money on. To try to deal with his irresponsibility of being a governor. Okay, if he wants to be president, that's fine. As far as I'm concerned, he needs to move. Himself out of the state, because if he's putting stuff like this into law, he is not thinking down the road. Of what the cities are going through. Um we, three ADUs per lot, give me a break, okay? And I will tell you, since twenty seventeen, not any member of the public in this great state of California has been able to. Vote on any of this absurd laws. It it's getting to be a joke. There is an excellent art of by article by Zelda Bronstein in Forty-Eight Hills about how they're lowering the the fees for developers. So they can just mow over the people of the state. But I think that we need to sit back and think very carefully about how. These ADU bills are being implemented in our city, because I know the next thing will be condos on every lot. And every tree cut down. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, let's bring it back to the commission for questions and comments. Jess?
I'll go first, if you don't mind.
Um sure, sorry to interrupt. I see one more hand raised on Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't check again after um after that. Let's see. Okay, um San Ralph, sorry, uh I missed you there. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Schorf. I want to bring to your attention that there have been a few incidents where landlords have put ADUs on driveways. And uh the only way that this was actually rectified was by the filing of P one one tickets and then the. Core violations led to the planning uh department, I think, asking that these things get permitted and then eventually it was corrected. But barring the process of actually having permits to ensure that ADUs are appropriately used. There have been incidents where landlords in particular have put ADUs on driveways and rented out the driveways. And while we all want to see more housing and we want to see more ADUs, uh I think we wanna avoid the scenario where they're right by the sidewalk. Uh living right off of the driveway. And so I would encourage you to think about that and how we can make sure that some permitting is retained. To prevent the misuse of these ADUs. I also would like to ask that these agenda items be separated as a as a good practice going forward, because. These are unrelated agenda items and we're combining them. For example, I am in favor of the two-story permitting uh simplification. I think that's a excellent move. And that's something I would support. Uh I'm not in favor of the ADU for the reason I described, because we have seen a trend of landlords putting ADUs on driveways. So. Kindly encourage uh during agenda setting to have these separate agenda items for uh for uh for clarity of of your votes as well. I think we saw the same with agenda item one. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I I was surprised to see them lumped together as well. Um okay, now we can bring it back. Uh nobody else to Jess. Go ahead.
Okay, cool. Um questions related to the two-story permit part first, the eliminating three-car wide curb cuts. What happens if you have a three-car garage in your house?
Uh great question. Um you know, so you would have a smaller, you would have that smaller apron approaching and then you're allowed to have a wider driveway as it.
So the the three cars wouldn't be able to pull out straight?
Well.
I mean, because that's how my house is.
Well, hopefully you don't have three cars.
We we have a three-car garage with a three-car wide curb cut. Um I mean, obviously, our house is thirty-plus years old. But effectively would stop allowing three-car garages to be built?
No, not necessarily. So if we do that now, even now, where people come in, the driveway apron itself is a three-car apron. But at the street, it narrows down to a two-car. And that's pretty um typical of of new homes. Where they have a two-car curb cut and it widens out to a three-car driveway. It's just the interface with the public is where we're concerned with. It's not with what you have on your property itself.
Okay, I just like, I'm just imagining how this would look. It's, you have it? Okay. Um the. The other question I had was in relation to no uh electrical heating HVAC on your roof or piping. This won't in any way construe that solar power piping would be not allowed.
Yeah, I mean, state law mandates we can, we have no discretion over any type of solar panels.
Okay, um and then my other questions were actually all related to ADUs. Um. I know we're following essentially state law by putting in all of the restrictions with the whatever the um streamlined versus non-streamlined. Is there any reason we can't be more generous than what's here?
That's up to you. I mean, it's up to the commission.
Because the only thing, I mean, my my honest feedback is there's no transit in Cupertino, so none of these um height uh approvals. Will actually improve any uh additional ADUs. I think we should potentially strike out anything related to ma- being close to major transit. Because it is, there's, for lack of a better word, useless. Um you're, unless you're gonna consider every potential corner where a. Car might stop to pick somebody up as a major transit, nothing's gonna get built here.
No, no, no. Major transit can be.
A bus stop.
It's a bus stop. Deans Boulevard, Stevens Creek, it all applies.
So if you think about the, I'll use my personal example. I live close to Jollyman Park. There is no bus stop near any of the homes uh within that entire neighborhood. There's nothing.
But but within a half a mile, isn't Home Depot within half a mile there?
There's no bus stop there. There's probably one on Deans.
There's one on Deans and and Bollinger.
Right, so all of those houses that are just out won't be able to have this extra benefit. I I don't see why we have to put this in here. Why, what, what is the actual benefit of being close to major transit that gives you a height? Um uh a more ha- more height?
It's what the state says.
No, no, but we don't have to follow the state. We could be much more generous than the state. I think this is completely ridiculous. I w- I wouldn't bother to put this in at all.
So you're saying, you know, open up the.
Everybody, because, yeah, because what, do we, do people live in houses that are close to a half mile of major transit in Cupertino because they use that major transit? Absolutely not. We don't have light rail. We don't actually have real transit here. We have buses that nobody gets on. Let's be honest here. So this to me is complete, I would strike all of this out.
So I have to agree with you, Jess, on this one also, because the difference we're talking about is sixteen feet versus eighteen feet, right? Which is like.
But it could make a huge difference on how usable the inside of that space is.
Yeah, right. But from the outside, I don't know that it makes.
I thought it was twenty-five feet.
Sixteen feet, you can't get a lofted space.
Twenty-five feet is if it's uh if it's attached to a, wait, hold on, let me find the text.
Yeah.
Yeah, if the, if, if it's, the primary dwelling is, is the principal dwelling is twenty-five feet, then you, it can be twenty-five feet. But the transit thing was it's sixteen feet or eighteen feet for a detached ADU within half a mile walking distance of a major transit stop or transit corridor. Um so that's what I'm saying. So the difference we're talking about is minimal for the. Considering the the complexity that we're adding and how complicated we're making it for residents of the city. I agree that it doesn't seem like the cost benefit.
Right.
Equation just.
And if I could just get a clarification, right? I mean, I've seen some of these built. Eighteen feet would allow you to have a lofted second floor?
That's correct. So I think the sixteen feet, the difference is it is only two feet, but if, you know, having it go up to eighteen feet allows for more standard nine, nine and nine uh ceiling heights.
Which is more usable for a normal-sized human.
Right, you could do it two stories in eighteen feet. Right, you could do it two stories in eighteen feet, it'd be tough, but flat roof.
So sixteen feet, you would do kind of like, it would be what, five, six feet on the walls and then gabled? So you, right, so you'd have a little bit of wasted space on the edges?
I, I think sixteen feet would be tough to get two stories in there.
Okay.
Yeah, those are my only comments. I mean, I just don't see the point of this major transit, we're not in a transit city.
Right, that's, right, that's, that's the state law that put that in there.
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense for us.
Okay, um. Anything, oh, the thing about the, um, the pipes and stuff on the roof, what about solar hot water? Pool heater.
You know, I, I think if, you know, our intention would be if it's, if it's there to service solar, I mean, there's not much discretion we have. So if it's for solar, that's fine. I think it, we run into situations, particularly when you have flat roofs, Eichler's neighborhoods, where people are throwing their heaters and air conditioning on top of the, of the ceiling. So that's the type of things that staff wants to prevent from happening.
I mean, can't we put something in that it? You can't, it, it can't be like more than one foot high if it's on the roof or something. So to allow for solar hot water, solar pool heaters, that, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I guess, if I could add to that, if it was a flat roof house, right? Isn't it better for the HVAC to be on the roof and then just hide it? Couldn't we just put something to say that you can, you have to make it designed so that it's hidden from the street? Cuz I mean, that's effectively how commercial buildings are all built.
That's true.
HVAC is always on the roof. I mean, are we doing this because aesthetically it doesn't look good? Because then it could just be that it needs to be like somewhere hidden in the back of the house.
Yeah, that, that's precisely it, it, you know, this is, these are design standards that are in there. Um, you know, if it's, if, if it's the will of the, of the commission, we, we can, we can strike that, make it a should.
It still has to be within the height limit though.
I think they, the issue is that a commercial building is tall, so.
But you can build, you can build effectively a, an apron around the building so you don't see it.
You, you could, but on a, on a, a residential building which had a thirty-two-foot height limit, then.
Right, no, I guess, but, I mean, I'm just thinking, there's a house that got built in my neighborhood, well, close to my neighborhood. It's a eighteen-foot tall one-story house. They effectively could put their HVAC on the back of their house and it's a flat roof house. Nobody would see it and it wouldn't, I'm sure they wouldn't hit their height restrictions, cuz it's not two-story.
I think the issue that we run into mostly with, is with Eichler's. We have Eichler developments coming, so it's, it's very visible from the street. And you know, if we do put some type of parapitting around its equipment, how does that detract from the Eichler standards that we have written? So that's, that, that's a concern that we have as staff to do that, how do we balance those?
But you're talking about putting it on if, is, uh, historical Eichler houses that already exist. Right, but then this is now talking about new construction. So I don't, I don't think it actually, doesn't make any sense.
If I may, most cases, people do put their, uh, heating and cooling equipment on the ground. Um, and, and this is not an issue, uh, in, in new construction, for the most part. Um, they're either in the attic space or i- in the, in the back of backyards and other places. Um, the issue is when, uh, we have single-story additions or other things in, um, for single-family homes where, uh, particularly Eichler's where they, you know, like to put the, uh, it, it's easier to put the heating and cooling equipment on top of the roof, which gets pretty visible for the Eichler's. Um, and pretty unsightly.
Right.
And, um, putting screening up detracts pretty heavily from the design aesthetic of Eichler's.
No, that's fair.
And so it, it's not something that, you know, to the extent that they're screened and inside, uh, structures on, on the roof, that is not what we're, we're talking about equipment that's just set out on the roof.
Right, but then I think the wording here needs to all be changed.
Then, then it's probably covered under the.
It is not currently explicitly covered.
Yeah.
Well, it's not in the Eichler ordinance now.
Perhaps that's the place where, where it would belong.
Exactly. Uh, it, it is entirely up to the will of the commission for how it wants to word it or not include it.
It seems like it belongs in the Eichler section because now we are penalizing every other.
Yeah.
You know, house in the city because of what our requirements are for Eichler's.
If it is the will of the commission, and like I said, I mean, if the commission doesn't have any concern about having this be visible on other single-family homes also, then that's certainly where it should go.
You know, there's another issue that a resident contacted me about. He couldn't replace his less efficient air conditioner with a new one. Because even though the new one was less noisy, it was still exceeded the standard to be close to the house next door. Um, maybe he would have wanted to put it on the roof where it would have been far enough away. Uh, it's very, was very, yeah.
But I think maybe, maybe we can address the, that issue with if it can, if there can be a parapet or something to, to hide it, then it's, then it's okay to approve it. Except on Eichler's.
Wow, we're talking about Eichler's.
You have to decide if you're gonna give free hide for that parapet, right? That's the, the issue.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I, I, I think that, I mean, I, I don't know what you guys think here, but I, I think that what we, what we're there's definitely a feeling here that you would want to remove this restriction for a non-flat roof, flat-top roof. Because, because it's starting to get into territory where there might be a solar fixture that I would like. I mean, you know, some people would argue solar panels are ugly. Uh, you know, they shouldn't be allowed to face the street or something, that would be a problem at my house. Uh, so, so what you're really kind of saying is, okay, there's an architectural restriction on Eichler's that might be very strict about putting, uh, equipment on the, on your roof. But for everybody else, you know, doesn't really make sense.
I, I think it's not solar equipment that we're talking about, we're talking about the condensers and the other structures. So as long as we're clear about that distinction.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen hot water heaters that are, you know, tall on top of a roof, not the flat, flat ones too. And, you know, we're trying to encourage sustainability, you know. You could save a lot of energy if people would put solar hot water heaters in, but it's very rare.
Yeah, I think what I'm, I'm hearing anyway is that anything solar-related is, that's different, periods. Anything that's purely, so, I mean, something that's generating energy and is solar, that's treated differently than something that's really equipment and operational to the house. But that you would, you would like it so long as it would be screened, it would be okay so long as it's screened from a public right-of-way or a public view. If it's on the rear of a structure, can't be screened or is hidden by a parapet, then it would be acceptable, but I, I think Eichler's would be treated differently since it's a single subdivision. And they have very different aesthetics, they don't have a crawl space below too. So there's a real temptation to go up on the roof, which does alter the look of an Eichler, which also has a lower roof line. So, I mean, that might be one way to address this.
You know, we also have these, these new state laws where you can build within four feet of the property line, right? I mean, you can't put your air conditioner, you know, within four feet. It wouldn't even, it wouldn't even be possible.
That's true.
Um, so, yeah, we may see more stuff on the roof if, if ADUs take off like, uh, the state hopes.
Okay, I, I had one other comment. It's probably sound like a broken record. One of the things that's happening here is that with the two-story permit, uh, I don't, I don't generally have a problem with making it easier. Uh, I've complained about the balcony, um, calculation before. It seems like if there's a way to, you know, to bring that into the discussion such that, that the, you know, right now balcony is free space. And, and I think that that just leads to a lot of, uh, community issues. So I, again, would encourage you to consider, I mean, you know, the balcony lobby is too strong, I guess, to, uh, to defeat on this. Which, you know, potentially leads to the lobby lobby. But, uh, yeah, uh, I would, I would consider that as well. I mean, I just, again, that's something, something kind of noticeable here was that it, it's kind of easier to, to get that balcony now than it would have been before. Uh, cuz you wouldn't, you wouldn't be coming for a hearing to complain about the balcony of the person, uh, you know, next door. Just, just a comment.
Yeah, that. That's a very good point that I, I don't think anyone else thought of, um, appreciate that. So if we eliminate the hearing, then it would be less likely that somebody would come complaining about the balcony, which I don't know if that's a bad thing or a good thing.
It's hard to say whether it's bad or good. I mean, you know, that, I, it just seemed, it, it's a freebie now and it, it probably shouldn't, I mean, you know, my recommendation is that that not be a freebie and that that would be.
Understood, and let me just clarify one more time. And, and, you know, we, we still are gonna require minor residential permit for balconies if they have, um, views in the side or rear yard, so we're not getting rid of that process.
Okay.
Cuz that's, I mean, what we hear, um, as staff, um, is that, you know, the main complaints about privacy and it's probably the same, the same concerns you have as well from neighbors is, you know, it's not as much as the window sills, you know, below five feet is, my neighbor's got this huge balcony and they can see me and all that stuff. So we're still gonna have them, that minor residential permit for those balconies.
Right, and so, so I, I do think that that's true, that when we've had those hearings, they often are complaining about the balcony. And the balcony is there because you can have that, you know, that space is given to you without being part of the, uh, far calculation. So, you know, that. I, I don't think I probably need to comment about it anymore.
So, so in, in relaxing this, you know, single-story, double-story, we're not adjusting, relaxing the far calculation, right? That they still have to meet the.
At, yes, Vice Chair.
And, and, and all the privacy screening issues and all that, you know, that's still intact.
So, and including the, you know, um, on your tile report, we do covenants and that, that's all gonna be maintained.
So what is the downside of eliminating it?
You tell me.
I mean, why wasn't this done ages ago if it's such a great idea?
You know, there's always a concern about the community, it's timing as well, you know, where we are, projects and whatnot. Um, you know, a lot of things kind of, external factors kind of pushes to this point. You know, staffing is, is one thing, of course, but, you know, also, you know, cognizant that the, the, the development trends in the community are such that, you know, I, we did an analysis in the last couple of weeks, you know, in the last, I mean, since July twenty-two, July twenty-twenty-two to November of this year, you know, we've had fifty-seven, I'll just share my screen, I have it up right here, we've had fifty-seven, uh, new single-family building permits issued. And when I say new single-family, it's like you, you have your, your home on your single-family lot. You raise it and you build a new one. Of those fifty-seven permits that have been issued in that timeframe, forty-nine have been for two stories and eight have been for single-story.
But how many of those forty-seven, forty-nine were single-stories before?
Great question, uh, many of them were. I mean, very rarely do you see, have we seen, you know, a, a two-story, a two-story, existing two-story home actually torn down. It happens, it, it does happen, but most of those are single-story themselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is the backlog of like the planning staff in terms of issuing permits? Is it?
With, with residential ones, we, we do have stricter time limits because of HAA, so we do have to get things out, you know, within thirty days.
This is for new, I'm talking about like for projects that are adding in addition, you know, how long would that?
Oh, you know, like I said, we, we try to get it out thirty days for first comment. Um, but, you know, it, for just building permits, we're looking at, you know, forty-five days, fifty days.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, you know, eliminating this process could, could at least free us up and, you know, be a better service to the community.
Right.
You know, I think if I could just add on that too, it's that this adds probably about two to five months to the process prior to submitting for a building permit, which staff is essentially looking at the same things with the same requirements. So it's adding probably five to seven thousand dollars for the permit costs and two to five months in time. And I think it was over the last, I don't know, last several years, we looked where there were ninety-eight, last two years, there were ninety-eight two-story permits done. Only three of those were appealed and all of the original decisions were upheld. So that's ninety-eight permits that the person then still had to go through the building permit.
And the applicant has to pay more because of.
Right, so I think in that sense, it was really looking at it, not only is it assisting staff in our processing times, but also the community in being able to go through the building permit process and get their project sooner.
Okay, very good. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Uh, so one is the going, sorry, going back to table nineteen dot one-one-two dot zero-three-zero dot A. Um, so basically about the, the streamlined ADUs. Um, the number of units, it just seems overly complicated to say you can have a maximum of three ADUs, but they have to be one of each of these types, of these four types of ADUs. Like, who came up with that? Like, it has to be only one of each, and I feel like that's just overly prescriptive, uh, because everybody's property is different. Their requirements may be different, they may decide they need to attach ADUs, they may decide they need to detach ADUs or, um, but they're restricted to only one attached ADU, one, only one detached ADU, only one junior ADU. And the, it again seems just unnecessary complexity. Um, they're still gonna go through review, so it's not like we'll get some sort of monstrosity that'll get through, you know, somehow. Um, but in the, in the, in the spirit of trying to simplify this and not have onerous requirements, um, that just seems like one where we should just say, do, have a maximum of three ADUs, but in any combination of these four, whatever that may be.
Oh, I, I mean, I wouldn't wanna see someone putting in three eight-hundred, three seven-hundred-ninety-nine square foot detached ADUs. I mean, that is.
But that, they probably don't have space for that anyway.
Well, then, they don't have space is not an issue.
But my point is, everybody's property is different and, and it just, I, I feel like we're putting in restrictions, we're, we're creating a solution for a problem that we don't know that we have.
Right, actually, to add to that, is this, was that essentially decided arbitrarily or was there some sort of science behind that?
That's, that's a dangerous comment.
It's worth asking because if it just came from somebody else and we copied and pasted it, then it is arbitrary.
You know, it, it's, it's. State law.
Yeah, so for us, we could do whatever we wanted, as long as it meets the minimum of this.
Yes, if, we, we can't be more restrictive than the state, we can be less restrictive.
Right.
We can absolutely be, uh, with the understanding that, that some of these are freebies from FAR under state law. And as long as that is the will of the commission, we can change this any way you want.
Right, okay, it's good to know.
So, right, so that was one comment. And then I agree with Tejesh's comment about, um, I don't know why we need the sixteen feet versus the eighteen feet for if you're within half a mile of a major transit. I don't know that a bus line qualifies as a major transit stop or transit corridor, but, okay, fine, maybe. But even then, I don't know why we need that distinction of sixteen versus eighteen.
Depends on the headways, yeah.
It seems unnecessarily complicated to me. It's like, honestly, if I look at a building, I don't, I can't tell you if it's sixteen feet or eighteen feet necessarily. Uh, twenty-five feet, yeah, sure, I can tell you that difference, but sixteen to eighteen feet, it just, it, it just adds unnecessary complications. So I, I would simplify that as well and get rid of all this, this transit stuff. Um, on the, um, the non-streamlined ADUs, I had a question about the number of units. It says only one accessory, um, only one ADU is permitted. Uh, is this another case of that's the minimum required by state and can we, can we loosen that? Or are we required to hold to only one ADU?
My thoughts and Michael Kirk, if I'm wrong, we, we can, we can be as loose as, as you want. The cities, I mean, that's, that's the minimum we have to allow. I mean, and the thought is, cuz, you know, non-streamlined tend to be up to twelve-hundred square feet. So, you know, you add, you know, they're not the.
But you still have the side, I mean, you still have all the other rules that apply, right?
Correct.
Setbacks and.
Correct.
Setbacks and heights.
But they do count as FAR though.
It, it won't count for.
No, the, the four feet still counts for a non-streamlined, I don't think so.
Right, right, so you do have, you, you, you are subject to FAR law coverage for non-streamlines and setbacks as well.
Oh, got it, yeah, it's only up to eight hundred square feet that you get, and fly under the radar.
Exactly.
So you are subject to all the setbacks and the height requirements and all that stuff, right? So limiting it to one ADU is arbitrary again.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't think anyone ever, I mean, really, you, you almost wanna do a lot split by the time you're trying to put in multiple ADUs on, on your existing lot. When you're doing that, you know, to maximize your, your profit, you, you'd be better off doing a lot split.
You know, one, one standard that's hardly mentioned ever is that we do have FAR standards for rear yard. You know, one one standard that's hardly mentioned ever is that we do have F A R standards for rear yard, rear usable yard as well. So, you know, if you have a detached structure, I mean, not counting, you know, like a shed or something like that, it can only make up about thirty percent of your usable rear yard area. So, you know, if he has something that's over eight hundred square feet in a standard R one lot, I mean, that alone is probably gonna take up about a third of your your rear lot area anyway.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, you're better off with the seven ninety nine square square foot and not having it count.
That happens.
Oh, um, oh, yeah, it happens all the time, and then and then you get the four feet.
Actually, we get a lot of set seven forty nine, because then you avoid, you know, public works mitigation fees.
Ah, okay, oh, that that kicks in at seven fifty. Okay. Um, how, by the way, how many ADU permits have we done in Cupertino like in the last year?
You know, I didn't do, we, I I haven't done one that's recent, but we were starting to plateau the last few years. Um, you know, as as cost of construction has gone up and whatnot, I think a lot of our ADU production was based upon spec building, where a lot of our um our more consistent developers have come in and included an attached ADU as part of their.
Right, as a new, yeah, that makes sense. Doing a separate, I mean, I looked into that, it's like, wow, it's uh like half a million dollars for an eight hundred square foot by the time you're done.
One one, you know, I I I failed to to include the link in the in the presentation, but we do have, um, the sis not not genized, but, you know, we, San Clara County has done an ADU program, um, where we've, where they've done like price calculations for development of ADUs within your specific jurisdiction. If you go to the city's website, uh, ADU webpage, that that all the links are located in there, what I think is the Planning Collaborative. Yeah, ADI, the ADU calculator within the San Clara County Planning Collaborative, and it's all linked with our website as well.
You mean, how much it would cost to be?
Estimated, yes, uh, twenty three, was it the twenty three jurisdiction, what was it called, San Mateo County, did something similar, twenty one elements. Well, that's one of the twenty three to me, excuse me, but twenty one elements with San Mateo County, um, was kind of the predecessor to San Clara Counties.
Interesting, I have to look at that. Did you have an estimate for the number of applications? I heard the part about it plateauing.
Yeah, I would say somewhere between thirty or forty.
Okay.
Last year, we had about seventy four. Um, this year, we really haven't done the math.
Okay, um, anybody else have anything more, or we?
So are we are we going to make any changes to this resolutions, or no, are we again, you know, splitting the resolution into two, like ADUs and, you know, the two story stock?
It's actually a split now, isn't it?
Oh, no. Is there advantage to splitting it? Um, if I mean, the ADU, we really have not a lot of options, my, is that true, Michael? Because we wanna even if we didn't do it, we'd still be subject to the state law.
So I think I what I heard from this discussion is whether we can adopt standards that are that are even um um more
Less restrictive.
Less restrictive than what the state is requiring. I think for some of this, as I'm glancing through the laws, it 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 talks about height being a minimum, right? A a a public entity shall not pass an ordinance that that limits height any any lower than sixteen feet. Um, because some jurisdictions rather have a a more modest ADU. And so it it talks about in terms of limits, I just haven't had time to research all the other questions that that has come up. And so my my suggestion is that you make your recommendation to the city council to say, you know, consider doing, you know, these these other things.
I mean, I think the sixteen versus eighteen feet is a, you know, is a good idea to just not not distinguish between those two. The rest, I mean, I would not favor um allowing three ADUs of any type.
Yeah, yeah, so I I'm not in fair enough, you know, of doing more than what's minimally needed. So if that's the route we are going to go, you know, we need to split it. Yeah, I'm in fair enough, you know, like two story stock, right? But when it comes to ADUs, you know, I want us to stick to, you know, what the minimal state requirements.
Well, that that makes sense. I mean, someone needs to make a motion to to adopt the the staff recommendations to approve this the the second story permits and to make the changes pursuant to state law regarding ADUs.
Yeah, we also have to put in, if we're gonna change the allowing HVAC type stuff on the on the on the roof.
What would be the easiest way to do that?
You could just uh strike the language in, you know, subsection, blah, blah, blah. I think it's.
We may just change it to, you know, the solar element, uh, would be one way to do that.
Or you could, you could add language to say, you know, no mechanical equipment other than, you know, solar or energy efficiency equipment may be installed on the roof kind of thing.
Sure, but how do we all feel? I mean, I I don't see an issue with compressors being on roofs if they're properly screened. So are we steering towards solar first for one particular reason? Because that then that basically.
The properly screened would count against the height limit, so that's.
But that's the the builder or the owner's problem, not ours.
But then 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 we don't need to make any change.
Then we don't, shouldn't, we should just strike this out completely, is what I'm saying. Because what they're effectively doing with the way it's written is that you would never get a compressor on a roof. Which is not what I'm suggesting.
Right, yeah.
Perhaps someone can make a motion, uh, as we've been doing, and then read off the resolution. And then the second part of the resolution is to adopt the proposed amendments to the municipal code as indicated in exhibit A with the following exceptions, and then
Sure.
you know, then you can add those in and get a second and.
Well, I can make the motion for the normal part of.
Go for it.
Okay, yeah, if 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 everyone's ready. Yeah, I think I think we've beaten it to death. So we're we're basically what we're gonna do is we're gonna put in a a motion for the um, the text that's here. But we're going to change point two to introducing, introduce some modifications to the.
So we're doing a motion only for the the second story?
Yeah.
I don't know. It's, they're kind of put together here. That's the, yeah, I I don't know why they were put together.
Is it one motion for both things and then we suggest all of our amendments as separate amendments?
I I think that 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 seems like it would work. Uh, yeah, okay, do I need to read the entire thing? Can I, can I just, can I shorten point one?
I I think you could say find it exempt from SEQA as written in the resolution.
Yeah, okay, all right, so I move that uh uh that we adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cupertino recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance amending municipal code chapter nineteen point one two, chapter nineteen point two eight, and chapter nineteen point one one two regarding two story permit and accessory dwelling unit ADU laws. Now, the Planning Commission recommends that the city council uh determine the project exempt from the requirements of the California California Environmental Quality Act of nineteen seventy, uh, and then the rest of point one as as presented here. Which contain, uh, includes some other comments regarding uh SEQA. And then uh point two, that we adopt the proposed amendments to the municipal code as indicated in exhibit A with uh modifications that we will collect now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Somebody has to second.
I'll second.
Okay, so I would like to propose an amendment that for the uh for nineteen point two eight point one one zero, Single Family Residential Design Guidelines and Principles, A dot five, we change that to any mechanical heating or cooling or associated piping installed on the roof shall be screened from public right away.
Perfect.
Okay, yeah, I'll second that.
No, I think the the mover needs to accept that friendly amendment, and then whoever seconded.
Yeah, I would accept that, uh, accept the friendly amendment.
And then whoever seconded is also needs to agree to that friendly amendment.
All right.
Chair Sharp.
Oh, okay, I agree to the friendly amendment. Do I need to second the amendment as well?
No, no.
No, I I agree to the friendly amendment, right, and you can just second it. Okay, I second it.
So, any other amendments?
Oh, in regards to the sec two story? No, I think that's it.
No, no.
Are we doing everything?
Yeah, yeah.
So then I propose propose an amendment to um the for in regards to chapter nineteen dot one one two ADUs. That we strike out uh reference to uh the additional height requirements only for ADUs that are within a half mile of walking distance of a major transit stopper corridor. Um, such that all homes uh in Cupertino will be uh able to build up to eighteen feet.
I second that.
I had to accept that. I had to accept the friendly amendment.
Yeah, he's made a second friendly amendment.
Sorry, we'll get the hang of it.
The mover accepts.
Yes. I I do accept the friendly amendment.
And then the second of the motion?
Stephen, you have to accept it.
Yeah, I accept it as well. Wow, I need to reread the Rosenberg's Rules of Order.
Um, okay, and
I think anybody actually could second.
The third amendment that that I would propose is to uh replace maximum three ADUs per lot in any combination of the following with the revised text that says maximum three ADUs per lot in one or more of the following designs.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll accept the friendly amendment. Yeah, I'm a, yeah, I would not, I would not vote for that amendment. I I think the state law. I think the one junior, one detached, one attached is appropriate for the city.
So at this point, we have one motion with two friendly amendments and, you know, and second, that's what we have at this point.
Right, okay, my last amendment, um, in table nineteen point one one two zero four zero, which is about the non-streamlined ADUs. Um, row A, number of units, um. So I don't know, should I say strike that out, or should I say, like, change it to um that they can have more than one? Basically, can I just strike that out?
Sure.
So if we strike it out, what happens?
Then.
There's no maximum.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so how about we make it consistent with um the number of units allowed in table nineteen dot, well, for the streamlined ADUs? So we make the number of ADUs allowed consistent for streamlined ADUs and non-streamlined ADUs.
Yeah, because they're still gonna have to follow all of the F A R and setback anyway.
Exactly, so let's just keep it consistent.
Yeah, sounds reasonable.
Wait, so what, how many non-streamlined could they have then?
As many as the.
The lot allows and they're willing to build, but still within the.
Within the F A R.
Yeah, because they would have all the setbacks of a regular house.
Exactly.
So effectively, unless you have an acre of land and you've got a two thousand square foot house on it, you're never gonna get more than one anyway.
So so they could build two, two eight hundred square feet ADUs instead of one sixteen hundred, if it would fit on the lot.
If it fits on the lot, maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
I think I was supposed to accept the friendly amendment, which I do.
Does the secondary accept? That's you, Chair. Do you accept that friendly amendment?
I don't accept that.
No? Okay, then it fails.
So can can anybody else accept that one? Someone else, the second, can that come from anybody?
There's one motion on the floor, you made that motion, and then he's, and then Chair Sharp seconded. And then there's a number of friendly amendments to your motion, you accepted, and the second also is accepted.
We have to start over, essentially, yeah.
So we have to do a new.
You had to do a substitute motion.
Okay. Uh, can I ask, well, how would, how would we say, if we asked for a substitute motion, they were going to recap the changes of what we did and then, well, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that's how you do it, right?
Well, you you have a substitute motion, and you've won that first. If that wins, and then 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 that's it.
The substitute motion?
Right.
Right, but the substitute motion can have amendments. Yeah.
Right, you could, you could, someone could make a substitute motion, get a second, and then and then others can make friendly amendments to the substitute motion.
All right, it's just, so it's just a different, we'll have a different second, is it?
So should I do a substitute motion? Okay.
Okay, I'll do a substitute motion. Uh, okay, wait, hold on, let me go find the resolution. Okay, uh, resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cupertino recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance amending municipal code chapter nineteen dot twelve, chapter nineteen dot twenty eight, and chapter nineteen dot one one two regarding two story permit and accessory dwelling units. The Planning Commission recommends that the city council determine the project is exempt under requirements of SEQA. With the whole chapter about SEQA, and then number two, adopt the proposed amendments to the municipal code as indicated in exhibit A with the following amendments. Um, that uh nineteen dot two eight dot one one zero, Single Family Residential Design Guidelines and Principles, row eight dot five, we change that to any mechanical heating or cooling or associated piping installed on the roof shall be screened from public right away. Also, for anywhere there's mention of um transit, uh, we replace that with just eighteen feet and uh no requirement for proximity to transit. Um, in both, uh, for both streamlined and non-streamlined ADUs. Um, that we, in table nineteen dot one one two dot zero three zero A, row number two, we replace maximum three ADUs per lot in any combination of the following with the revised text of maximum three ADUs per lot in one or more of the following designs. And in table nineteen dot one one two dot zero four zero, in row A, we make row A um the same, uh, consistent uh for streamlined ADUs as well as for non-streamlined ADUs, the number of ADUs allowed.
Proposed one more amendment, unfortunately.
No, it wasn't seconded yet.
It wasn't seconded yet, sorry.
You can make an amendment to it after it got seconded.
I'll second your amendment.
No, no, no.
No, my motion.
Second a motion.
Sorry.
My my.
I'm too tired to talk.
Yeah. So you second my motion?
Yes, I second your motion. You know, I can propose an additional amendment. Um, in regards to the ADUs, um, just that before, uh, we have approved eighteen feet for ADUs without any mention of within a uh my half a mile walking distance. I propose that we also um strike out for the allowance for a second story on attached or detached ADUs. The mention of also having to be within half a mile of walking distance of major transit. Such that an eighteen foot ADU can have a second story.
I'll second that. Can I?
No, you accept this amendment.
I accept your amendment.
Great.
So so the only question I heard, did did we include or not include the uh any combination of? She did, so I'll make an amendment to not I'll make an amendment that we should continue with the allowance of one de, one detached ADU, one attached ADU, and one junior ADU, but not allow it, not allow three of any of them like that.
Or two.
Or it, or two. Any combinations of a lot more than one. Right, yeah, one of each, just as it is now.
Okay.
So I have to accept or reject that, right?
You can, you can accept or reject, yeah.
Yes, you have to accept or reject that friendly amendment.
So I reject that friendly amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're ready to vote on substitute motion.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I I I will, I'll comment that, I I don't like that, that particularly. So just vote, and then we're done.
Do you want to make a substitute amendment?
Well, I I don't know, I mean, I I I guess I could, as a comment, I could say, I I think we have agreement if you retract that.
Which part?
The, any combination. As opposed to one of each kind, then I think we're done. The, any combination, as opposed to one of each kind. Then I think we're done.
All right, I'll retract it. Does anybody need to agree to that?
I'm not exactly sure what happened.
No, she removed the-
She removed one of the, one of the amendments.
Then it's kind of sounds like it was the original motion.
She accepted my, she accepted my-
I accepted his amendment.
She accepted, she accepted my amendment, so now, can you, can you clear the votes, Lauren, so we, because some of us already voted?
Yeah.
Can we?
Yeah, I'm just gonna go the next.
Oh, I can, oh, I can undo it?
One of those buttons over there.
Okay.
Can I clarify before we vote?
Yeah.
So the amendment to adjust the ADUs to have either, essentially, what, the way it's written currently is what's, what we're voting to approve.
You can have an attached, detached, and a junior.
Perfect, yeah.
You can have three.
But you can't, can or cannot have three of any kind?
That's right, you cannot.
Cannot. Got it, okay, good.
So you're required to have only one of each type?
Okay.
Well, you're allowed to have one of each.
You're allowed to, yes. I can't wait till we see a home that has all three.
Yeah, okay, now we can vote again. What's that arrow on my screen?
All right.
Oh, wow.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Hope somebody builds an eighteen-foot.
Wow, okay, let me go back to the agenda here. It's only eleven thirty, okay. Okay, there is no old business, any new business? No, it has to be, um, Staffing Commission reports, has anyone done anything in the last six months?
No, nothing relevant to this meeting.
I attended the mayor's meeting twice, but nothing really to report, especially now, many, many months later.
Right, actually, I missed the mayor's meeting I was supposed to go to, I was on an airplane, and I'm not allowed to do Zoom calls on an airplane, so I missed it unfortunately, and Mooney was not available either.
I attended one mayor's meeting in between, so not, no updates, and there also, there was a change made to, you know, who will attend the mayor's meeting, I don't know if you're all familiar with that change?
No.
So it's basically, you know, either chair, chair is not there, you know, vice chair is the only person that can attend. And it's not like, you know, previously we used to have rotations, so that rotations is off. It's chair or vice chair.
Yeah, I was a little confused about that because-
We got the invite asking, yeah, who could attend?
Asking if we could attend, and I thought the rule was only chair or vice chair could attend.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry about that, I've gotten a lot of emails the last couple days, and I was also talking about something else here, so I'm sorry if I missed the conversation.
Yeah.
We can find out more about that and get back to you.
Yeah, there is change that was made, so I was in that meeting.
Okay, now we're onto future agenda setting. So, I agree with David, we need to, at some point, have a talk about balconies. This, you know, I think the city council would appreciate it if we did something so they don't have to constantly deal with this, this issue, because it really should not be a freebie in terms of, you know, terms of your FAR. So can we, I know the limitation has been staff time lately, hasn't it? You know, what does the staff have time for in terms of preparing something like this?
For the next meeting, or just coming?
No, no, not necessarily, well, whenever the next meeting is, it could be another year, we don't know.
No, it should be next month.
Okay.
But, but just something addressing balconies in terms of, like, qualifying for FAR, or like, a global look at balconies.
Yes.
So, just curious, maybe a question to the staff. I was expecting us, you know, Planning Commission to meet more often, given that, you know, we were going through the housing element and approvals and all that, right, the iterations. And, and the fact that, you know, we were canceling meetings for six months kind of caught me by surprise. Like, you know, I expected us to be busy dealing with, you know, housing element staff, but rather, you know, it ended up being, you know, we didn't meet for six months. So, trying to understand, you know, what happened.
Primarily, there weren't projects agendized.
No, no, but, I mean, in other cities, when the housing elements, you know, modified and all, the Planning Commission is heavily involved, and now it seems we're, we're cut out of the process.
This seems appropriate time to adjourn, and you guys can have a sidebar to ask these questions?
Well, I mean, I mean, it relates to future agendas, too. You know, should we be meeting to discuss the housing element and, or builder's remedy, or any of that thing?
So the, the chair has the authority to, to advance items to discuss on the agenda, and for the rest of commissioners, he'll take two votes to add a topic for a future agenda. And then staff will work with the chair to, to determine, you know, when to, to schedule those.
Right, but I think what we're saying is shouldn't the staff have been proactive in involving the Planning Commission in the housing element discussion?
I'm pretty certain staff did the best they could to be as diligent as possible when it was appropriate to bring it to the Planning Commission. But anyways, we're going a little bit far afield from this agenda item.
Okay.
So in terms of this agenda item, I know staff is working on objective standards, and I know in other cities, the Planning Commission has actually been very involved in helping to set objective standards and identify what the objective standards have been, so I would like to, to request that we put that on as a future agenda item.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Sure, that, I mean, it's come up many times. I think with regard to the housing element, you know, I think there probably one element of this is because we were trying to be prompt in, in adopting a new housing element, that may have called to, you know, minimize the number of hearings and meetings, but, you know, that said, you know, I guess, that was my guess of what was happening there, but, yeah, I, I also felt that there was an opportunity, there's an opportunity for us to, you know, have an, you know, to, you know, find an item and focus on that, perhaps we needed to convince the council to send something like that to us.
Well, would it be appropriate to ask for an agenda item to get at least an update on the housing element? Without us just, even if it's just a summary version?
Well, my understanding is they're gonna be coming back to us, right, with their feedback on the, on the housing element, right?
The state will, yeah, I would estimate a month, something like that.
So can we schedule an agenda item for us to review the state feedback?
Iteration two went without, you know, Planning Commission involved, not at all. So I don't, I don't have any expectation that iteration three will be any different.
No, but I guess my point is, there's no point us reviewing the, what we sent to the state without knowing what the state says back. It makes more sense to wait and get the state's response, and then review that response in, and round two.
Iteration two vote has sailed already.
Right.
Right, I think that would be a fair request, is, it's about thirty days away, something like that, where we'll have a response, which will be available as soon as the response is out, that would go on HCD's website. But I think to discuss then, when we've submitted the second draft, we've gotten feedback on the second draft, that would make sense. It's almost a hundred percent certainty there's gonna be a third draft. So I, if the second draft were approved, I'd be thrilled, but I'd be shocked, I don't think that's gonna happen. So we will, we're fully anticipating submitting a third draft. So I think that would be more meaningful, I mean, if you haven't, the second draft's been available since October sixteenth. So that is available, it's on our website, if, otherwise, I'd be happy to send it to everybody if you haven't reviewed it. But it would be any more beneficial to have HCD's comments on the draft to then go back to you.
Yeah, I mean, discussing it in the Planning Commission provides an opportunity for residents to come and, you know, participate, right? So, otherwise, you know, everything looks like, you know, something is happening behind the scenes, you know, nobody knows what's happening.
No, and I understand, you, I think we had six meetings in two thousand twenty-two, so we had a lot, and then there's been a gap. And, and part of that was, I think everybody's well aware, Cupertino, I think, fell behind many other cities, and we've been sort of in a rush to catch up, which we have really been trying to do. So it's that balance of having input takes time, and rushing is trying to condense time, so, but I understand why you want to weigh in.
So can I make a request out an agenda item once the third draft is ready?
Yeah.
No, 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 so-
Feedback from the state?
Is it response from the state?
Response from the state.
Right, before-
So for us to review the feedback from the state and provide input on the draft.
Okay, we have to vote on it.
Do we vote on each agenda item? Do we need to vote?
I don't think we need to vote.
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
I, I would, I would just say that, given the economic concern-
Yeah, we want that, we want that agenda item.
Just need another member to say, I agree with him.
Yes.
Agreed.
Thanks.
And then the other agenda item I would like to make sure we have is that we review the objective standards before they are set.
Yes, agreed.
Okay, agreed.
So I, I, I would actually, I would actually say that, you know, out of financial considerations, because that is a big deal right now, that we not, that we not ask for meetings that are, you know, beyond the requirements, although I do think there are many times when there is, there is value in having, you know, having the, the opportunity to see a full report and, and have a hearing on that before it goes to the council. Right, the changes we made today, the recommendations we made today, I, I think if the council decided, hey, we're gonna, let's, let's change the, the limit of the number of ADUs, if they just introduced that at the, at the one hearing, I don't think that that, you know, nobody would feel that they had the appropriate notice.
No.
But the way we did it today, you know, that will be in the report, that's in the recommendations, people will see that's coming. You know, so I, I think, you know, in that spirit, there's definitely a place where there's value. I would really encourage that. And then on the balcony thing, just, I think it was, that was mostly clear, but I do think there is a very standard kind of, kind of report where, you know, where we look at, what are other communities doing, what are the pluses, what are the minuses, and what are the kinds of, I mean, I think there was a response here that everybody in the planning department, you know, kind of is like, oh, no, it's gonna be another, another balcony hearing. You know, if we can kind of capture that, I think that there's an opportunity that we could, we can really make an improvement there.
A gentle request to the planning staff, let's not try to mix, you know, multiple items into one resolution, because it makes it hard. So we have seen at least two instances where, you know, there was no need to mix them, but, you know, today, they were mixed in one resolution.
Okay, anything else?
One quick announcement, there's Planning Academy, March sixth through eight. I just, we can send you information on that, I just wanted to get that out there early. I'll have to see what our budget allows for with travel and all that.
Zoom meetings.
Long Beach, I believe.
That's in Long Beach again?
Close to the same place.
I think it's the same place, yeah.
Queen Mary again?
No, thank you.
Oh, different, oh, that's right, there's been a Long Beach.
It is really useful, but I, you know, I understand that the budget constraints.
For the cost compared to how much we got out of it, I'm not sure if I need to go back.
Okay.
Well.
Well, that's good to know, because the budget is considerably tighter than previous years.
And who has not been to one?
I've not been to one.
Yeah, maybe-
And I didn't go to the last one, so, you know.
Yeah, David and I will have fun.
And please, all I would request is, if the city does pay, stay for the whole thing. Okay, all right, I guess we're done. I love that thing.